Good morning.
Good afternoon.
Just kidding, making sure everybody's together. It's been a long day. Good afternoon and welcome to Tennessee State University Board Trustees Meeting, of course, this September the 20th, 2018. Allow me, first of all, to welcome all of you and, of course, I would like to, before we get going today, welcome all of you who are here today and, of course, we're very grateful today to have a few special guests with us today. We recognize Dr. Delmore Mitchell, who is the husband of our trustee, Dr. Mitchell, and he's a TSU grad. He would stand. I also recognize Dr. Burke, who is the Chair of the Faculty Senate with us today. Please stand. Thank you. And we welcome to the Tennessee State family and faculty, Mr. Horace Chase, who's Vice President of Business and Finance. This time, we're going to ask Dean Frank Stevenson to lead us in our invocation.
Let us bow. God, we thank you for this moment. We thank you for the leadership. Thank you for Chairman Walker, for President Glover, for this board, for this cabinet. We thank you for the opportunity to serve students. We thank you for the minds that have come together, God, and we pray your blessings on this meeting and continued success of this university. We pray, God, that you can just continue to bless in such an awesome way. Amen.
Thank you so very much and, of course, allow me to acknowledge the great work of this great Board of Trustees, the extraordinary work that we do in committees and the labor that you put in. Thank you so much. It is no small task and we certainly appreciate it. Mr. Obi McKenzie, I believe, is on the call and we appreciate him.
I am.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you so, so very much and we appreciate you as well. As you will note in your board materials for today's board meeting, we have several items on the agenda today. The next item listed on your agenda is roll call, so at this time, we'll have a roll call. Declaration of quorum. Thank you. Secretary Pendleton, when you call the roll.
Thank you, Chair Walker. Trustee Cole.
Here.
Trustee Corbille.
Here.
Trustee Freeman.
Here.
Trustee Lewis.
Trustee Martin.
Here.
Trustee McKenzie.
Here.
Trustee Mitchell.
Here.
Trustee Sekman.
Here.
Trustee Walker.
Here.
Trustee Simpson.
Here.
We have a quorum and just a note that with Trustee McKenzie's calling in, we are going to have a roll call vote on all of our action items.
Very well. Thank you. Thank you so much. The first action item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the June 24th, 21st, 28th board meeting you have in your September 20th, 2018 board materials, the minutes of the June 21st board meeting. Is there motion to approve the minutes of the June 21st?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Hearing non, questions on the motion to approve the minutes on the June 21st board meeting, 2018, as contained in your board materials for the September 20th board meeting? All in favor? If you don't, I say aye.
Aye.
On roll call vote.
Oh, thank you very much. We'll have a roll call. Thank you very much.
Trustee Cole.
Yes.
Trustee Corbille.
Yes.
Trustee Freeman.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Trustee Martin.
Yes.
Trustee McKenzie.
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell.
Yes.
Trustee Sekman.
Aye.
Trustee Walker.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. The motion is approved. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the reappointment of the Audit Committee Chair pursuant to the Board's Committee of the Board Policy. The Board established the Audit Committee chaired by Trustee Cole. At the June 21st, 2018 board meeting, I announced the reappointment of Trustee Cole and the other Board Committee Chairs to serve for another one-year term. Pursuant to state law and the Board Audit Committee Charter, the Board must approve the Chair of the Audit Committee. I will entertain a motion to reappoint Trustee Cole to serve a one-year term as the Audit Committee Chair. Is there motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right. It's been properly moved and seconded. Let's take a vote.
Trustee Cole.
Aye.
Trustee Corbille.
Aye.
Trustee Freeman.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee McKenzie.
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell.
Aye.
Trustee Sekman.
Aye.
Trustee Walker.
Aye. The motion is approved. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the Audit Committee Report. The Chair recognizes Audit Committee Chair, Trustee Cole, who will report out the actions of other items from today's Audit Committee meeting.
The Audit Committee, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for the reappointment. The Audit Committee met today to take actions on one item, take action on one item, receive reports on and discuss two other items, and voted to go in executive session to discuss the items deemed confidential in nature under state law. The Committee voted to recommend to the full Board the approval of the June 21st, 2018 Audit Committee meeting minutes. The Committee also reviewed and discussed completed internal audit reports with President Glover and Internal Audit Director Davis and discussed the external state audit process. As I stated, the Audit Committee voted to recommend to the full Board the approval of the minutes of June 21st, 2018 Audit Committee meeting as contained in the board material for the September 20th, 2018 meeting. You have in your September 20th, 2018 board materials the minutes for the June 21st, 2018 Audit Committee meeting. On behalf of the Audit Committee, I move to approve the minutes of the June 21st, 2018 Audit Committee meeting as contained in the board material for the September 20th, 2018 board meeting.
All right. We'll take a vote on, yeah, it's properly moved. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
Thank you very much. This time, let's take a vote.
Trustee Cole.
Yes.
Trustee Corbille.
Yes.
Trustee Freeman.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Trustee Martin.
Yes.
Trustee McKenzie.
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell.
Yes.
Trustee Sekman.
Aye.
Trustee Walker.
Yes. Motion is approved. Thank you. All right. This concludes the Audit Committee's report. Thank you so much, Trustee Cole, and other members of the Audit Committee for your service on the Audit Committee. Thank you so much. Next item on the agenda is the Finance and Budget Committee Report. Chair recognizes Finance and Budget Committee Chair, Trustee Corbille, who will report out the actions and information, items from today's Finance and Budget Committee meeting. Trustee Corbille.
Thank you, Chairman Walker. We had one, only one approval during this meeting and several report outs in a very lengthy meeting, very robust meeting, but the first thing for approval that I'll get to in just a minute is that we'll be approving the minutes for the June 21st, 2018 Finance and Budget Committee minutes. The Finance and Budget Committee also welcomed their new Vice President for Business and Finance, Mr. Horace Chase, who you've generally met. He stood up for just a short time, but President Glover and Cynthia Brooks introduced him to the Budget and Finance Committee. Just so you know, you do have the full bio in your packet. But prior to his arrival at TSU, Mr. Chase served as Vice President for Financial and Administrative Affairs at Jackson State Community College, a TBR institution, for 17 years. He's a Certified Public Accountant and holds an MBA from the University of Tennessee. We really appreciate and welcome Horace to the team. In addition, President Glover and Cabinet members and other staff provided various updates on institutional budgets and reports on enrollment, the TSU Foundation, and the Cumberland Project. Those reports, again, were pretty robust, great discussion and all. Particularly during the committee, there was a discussion about TSU enrollment. Now, President Glover will be providing those here and on the board a very detailed review and a discussion of that enrollment later in this agenda. So I'm going to defer it on that. So going back then, as I stated earlier, we have one approval item for the Finance and Budget Committee. It was the approval of the minutes of the June 21st, 2018 meeting. You have in your packet the September 20th board meeting, the minutes for those. And on behalf of the Finance and Budget Committee, I move to approve the minutes of the June 21st Budget and Finance Committee meeting.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Let's take that to a vote.
Trustee Cole.
Yes.
Trustee Corbille.
Yes.
Trustee Freeman.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Trustee Martin.
Yes.
Trustee McKenzie.
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell.
Yes.
Trustee Sekman.
Aye.
Trustee Walker.
Yes. Motion is approved.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to provide some faculty insight on the items that were related to the Finance and Budget Committee this morning.
Thank you, sir.
All right. So according to the Association of Governing Boards, in the most fundamental sense, as we, as the Board, should oversee TSU's academic quality and outcomes as well as its fiscal conditions, we need to ensure that our students are provided with high-quality learning experiences. TSU has two main revenue sources. The first one is revenue generated by tuition and fees, and this depends on our enrollment as we discussed this morning. The second one is the state appropriations, and this depends on our productivity, including retention and graduation. TSU is having some enrollment, retention, and graduation issues. Our headcount enrollment is down 8 percent, and FTE enrollment is down 8.7 percent this academic year. In fact, out of 7,782 students in headcount enrollment, we have about 2,000 students who were in the perched list but not purged. Over 1,700 of those students have balances above $1,000, and over 700 of them have balances over $5,000. In other words, our true revenue generating enrollment, I emphasize revenue generating enrollment, is lower than the numbers presented to the Board. Last year's higher enrollment numbers are misleading as well because they resulted from allowing students to remain in school without paying fees. The resulting balances precluded students' ability to return this year. Many students have $10,000 and higher balances remaining from last year. Current financial aid awards per federal guidelines cannot pay previous balances. Last year's short-term headcount enrollment fix has resulted in significant burden for the students and significant 2018, 2019 enrollment decline for the university, and it led to rating the university reserves to write off student debts. TSU is not on solid financial footing. TSU recently announced $5 to $10 million budget cuts, and I strongly believe that we will have to have further cuts in the spring and next year due to students' inability to return. At the June 21st, 2018 meeting, I expressed that the proposed 2018, 2019 budget was not realistic, nor was it in keeping with what was reported to the campus community in terms of projected enrollment decline and writing of student debt. As I explained, allowing students to stay in school without paying fees resulted in tremendous student debt that will negatively impact our students' ability to continue their educations. Our emergency reserves declined this year to offset writing off last year's student debts. It appears that we adopted the same policy of not purging students this year, and it's only logical to expect more budget cuts next summer. And as one VP voiced, there may be even four lows or layoffs. In the event that budget cuts do indeed become necessary, they should align with the strategic goals of the university, the primary goal being the delivery of academic instruction. Therefore, I have a motion. I move that the October 2018 revised budget be based upon actual tuition, fees, and state appropriations revenue generation rather than headcount or FTE that is not based upon actually generated revenue.
Dr. Sekman, thank you so much for your commentary and your perspective, and obviously, I certainly respect it and think the Board does. Of course, obviously, the Audit Committee has had an opportunity to and committed to talk about many of these things and discuss them. Of course, we look forward to the President's report as she will address many of those concerns that you have raised. Obviously, there is a motion on the floor that I have to acknowledge, and so can you repeat? Let me leave counsel for that. Thank you.
With his motion, it would need to be seconded, so the call, the question is whether or not seconded.
Yeah, absolutely. Right. There is a motion on the floor. Can you repeat that motion one more time?
Yes. I move that the October 2000 revised budget be based upon actual tuition, fees, and state appropriations revenue generation rather than headcount or FTE that is not based upon actually generated revenue. I can open it if you need further clarification.
I'm not sure if you're aware of the fact that we only get 25% to 28% of our revenues from the state. So if you base the entire budget on the state appropriation, then that will be 28% of our revenues.
Actually, I was not clear probably. That's not what I meant. What I'm saying is...
That's what you said. And you also say we're not on sound financial footing. I don't think you are the person to make that decision, that comment, whether we're on sound financial footing or not, because you're not an accountant, you're not a CPA, you're not a person who's reviewed financial statements and made decisions regarding financial statements. So to make that statement is a bit misinformed.
With all due respect, this is my seventh meeting as a Board Member, and every board meeting, we are provided with detailed budget and information, and as a faculty trustee, I have a liberty to analyze those numbers very carefully. And this is, by the way, the opinion that I express here is not my personal opinion, but it is typically collective feedback that I receive from the campus community. And when I say the budget, I'm trying to include the revenue generated by tuition and fees and state appropriations that are highly related to enrollment and graduation and retention at TSU.
Any other discussion before I, I'm asking for a second. I think the motion is on the floor. Without a second, the motion, obviously, will die. Is there a second to the motion that Dr. Sekman has presented?
Not a second, but I do have a comment.
Okay.
I'd like to make the comment that relative to the budget, number one, there are three phases of the budget that are presented, not just the one phase. And then, of course, the numbers are based on what is projected at particular time. Also, in the Audit Committee, we take a very detailed look at the financial reports that are presented from the state, et cetera, and in the committee meetings where the discussions and most of the work goes on. I think, and I don't know all the terminology that we're using there at that particular time, but I do think that we should wait and hear the President's report. I have, of course, the information relative to why we did not purge some students this year, but it's not my place to present that. The President will present that, but I was involved with the conversation and very comfortable with the fact that we did not purge those additional students this year because I was part, privy to that particular conversation. I only make these comments because I think it's very important that we state that while we may have some questions, I do have to, while we may have some questions, I respect your very detailed analysis of everything that is done, Dr. Sekman, I do want to make it clear so that it does not appear that we are presenting information that is not valid or that we are presenting information that has no basis, because that is not the case, while we might take exception to the various reports that are presented. I would ask, Dr. Sekman, that you would wait until the end of the meeting and hear out some information that I am aware, but again, it's not my position as a Board Member, it is the President's position to present that information, that she will present relative to why we did not purge certain students and other information that is coming in. So I just felt that that is a comment that needed to be made at this moment. I do not have a second for, but that is a comment that would be.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, and the motion on the floor dyes for lack of a second. Thank you so much, Dr. Sekman. Thank you, Chair Corbille, for your wonderful report, and other members of the Finance and Budget Committee. You got to have work.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment as the Chair of the Finance and Budget Committee that, again, reiterate what, you know, Vice Chair Cole mentioned. There are two other avenues that the budget will be updated. One will be at our next board meeting. For those in attendance who are listening, a preliminary budget is presented to us, which is regarding, and I think what Dr. Sekman is referring to. Then for our November meeting, all the numbers are then updated. Post, where we have the best numbers at that point with enrollment and the best numbers from, not projections anymore. First one's a projection, the second one is getting closer to the numbers. Those will be presented by the, with the October updates for our November meeting, and then a final budget, once we have everything in place, we'll know with certainty. So I don't want anybody in the room or online, you know, viewing from home to think that these budgets are not carefully reviewed. Many of us Board Members have financial backgrounds, have done budgets like this before, and I feel very comfortable as the Chairman stating that by the end of the time that we're going to have the third iteration of our budget, we will have a very good idea of where we are from a revenue perspective and then what we need to do if anything on the expense side. So again, rest assured, there's more reviews and we'll be obviously taking Dr. Sekman's comments, you know, very seriously, and the faculty's comments, and really making sure what's best for the university.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Trustee Corbille. All right. The next item on the agenda is the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee Report. Chair recognizes Academic Affairs and Student Academic Chair, Trustee Martin, to report out the actions, items, and other items from today's Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee meeting. Trustee Martin.
Thank you, Chairman Walker. The Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee met today to consider and vote on four agenda items and to receive information on other agenda items. As to the action items, after consideration and discussion, the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee voted to recommend to the full Board, first, the approval of June 21st, 2018 Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee meeting minutes; second, TSU policy on SACS substantive change; the new certification academic programs for public health and local government. The Committee also voted to refer the agenda item regarding the inactivation of the School of Psychology concentration in the MS program in psychology back to the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee for further study and consideration. The Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee also received a report on academic affairs and student affairs, and Trustee Simpson reported on her recent experience participating in THAC-sponsored statewide orientation session for student trustees. I want to thank Trustee Simpson for her report and her participation on the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee.
Thank you.
As I stated earlier, the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee voted to recommend to the full Board the approval of the minutes of June 21st, 2018 Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee meeting as contained in the board materials for September 20th, 2018 board meeting. On behalf of the Academic Affairs Committee, I move to approve the minutes of the June 21st, 2018 Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee meeting as contained in the board materials for September 20th, 2018 board meeting.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All right. And, Mr. Pendleton, take that to a vote, please.
Okay. Trustee Cole.
Yes.
Trustee Corbille.
Yes.
Trustee Freeman.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Trustee Martin. Yes.
Trustee McKenzie.
Yes.
Trustee Sekman.
Aye.
Trustee Walker.
Yes. Motion is approved.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to provide some faculty insight on the topics related to the discussion of the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee. The first one is related to the academic rankings of TSU, and this is, I had multiple conversations so far about this, but I can say that academic rankings of a university are very important indicators of how successful a university is. It is important that we know where we really are so that we can have a vision where to go. In the June 21st, 2018 board meeting, I expressed my concerns about the decline of TSU's HBCU rankings over recent years. I expressed that according to the U.S. News, which is the main ranking agency, TSU was ranked number 22 in 2017. I was worried about this, and I asked if you have any plans to improve our HBCU rankings. In recent history, TSU has continued to slip in the rankings. In 2009, we were number 11. 2010, we were number 15. 2011, number 20. 2012, number 18. 2013, number 19. 2014, number 14. 2015, number 21. 2016, number 21. 2017, number 22. 2018, number 22. The most recent U.S. News ranking, which was available last July for 2019, indicated that we are now number 34 in the HBCU rankings. This is out of 76 to 80 HBCUs that were ranked by the agency. This is a serious concern for the campus community, and still today, there is no indication that TSU is worried about our national, statewide, or HBCU rankings. Those concerns have been strongly expressed by a number of faculty members and department chairs to me. Do we have any sound plan to reverse this trend? What will we do differently in order to generate a different outcome? What is the vision for short-term, medium-term, and long-term? In other words, we are really worried about it. The faculty expressed that they want to see a vision for those. Therefore, I have a motion. I move that the Board is provided with a comprehensive plan, not goal and objectives, that describes in detail the following. One, the underlying real issues for decline in HBCU rankings. Two, short-term, medium-term, and long-term goals for national, statewide, and HBCU rankings. Three, the plan to reach our short-term, medium-term, and long-term goals for those rankings.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sekman. Let me just speak to this, Madam President, also as well, before we acknowledge your motion. I'm handing, passing around information that was given to me here recently, and I'd like you to get this to Dr. Sekman, and we have enough copies. And for those of you who are here, it's important to know, of course, you know, the U.S. News report is a very credible ranking system, but of course, we get our news from a lot of different places, all of us do, and that's the importance of a broader sense of looking at things. The 2017 HBCU rankings by HBCUcolleges.com has ranked Tennessee State University at the top 50 HBCUs as number 14 on this particular document. I'm sure there are a variety of the ranking systems that we have, and whatever we decide to go is credible, et cetera. There is the top HBCUs, the top five HBCUs in Tennessee. Tennessee State University is ranked number one. The top 15 HBCUs in agricultural schools. Tennessee State University is ranked number six. The top 50 HBCU computer schools. Tennessee State is ranked number 21. And the top five geography schools. Tennessee State is ranked number four. Obviously, this is for reference and for the record, HBCU-colleges.com report, and I'm sure there are a variety of the rankings, and so obviously, all of these things have to be taken into consideration as we talk about rankings and status and et cetera. There is a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I would like to, little bit on this. We have to go with the norms. What is the main ranking agency for the university rankings? That's what we need to go with. We cannot be selective in finding, you know, the rankings that, but the U.S. News is the main ranking agency, not only for HBCUs but other institutions worldwide, so I would suggest that we take number 34 for 2019 really seriously in terms of rankings of TSU.
Go ahead, Madam President.
And I totally agree that rankings are important because we want to make sure that we are properly represented in the larger world. U.S. News and World reports, we have spoken with them to determine how they rank universities. It's ranked largely on enrollment, and we made some strategic decisions about enrollment that we'll get to later. Enrollment and funding is another one, and retention. So we're aware, well-aware of what it takes to move up in the rankings, and that's that, and we're on a path to move up in the rankings. We did share with you some indicators other than U.S. News and World reports, because there are several ranking agencies especially that rank HBCUs. U.S. News and World reports, that's only one. We're ranked number 14 by HBCU.com. We're ranked higher in other rating agencies. I admit the U.S. News and World report, we really do want to be, have a higher ranking, but it's since it's based so much on enrollment, we're going to make sure that as we grow our enrollment through our recruitment and our retention plans, we will move up in the rankings.
Very well. Thank you. Any other discussion?
Oh.
Okay. There is a motion on the floor. Is there a second to that motion? Can you repeat the motion?
Yeah. I move that the Board is provided with a comprehensive plan, not only goal and objectives, that describes in detail the following. One, the underlying real issues for decline in HBCU rankings; the short-term, medium-term, I move that the board is provided with a comprehensive plan, not only goal and objectives, that describes in detail the following. One, the underlying real issues for decline in HBCU rankings. The short term, medium term, and long term goals for national, statewide, and HBCU rankings. And the plan, the associated plan to reach our short term, medium term, and long term goals.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So, because the work of the, and the work gets done in the committees, is there a committee that would be the most appropriate to look at, not just rankings, but overall? This has to do with strategic planning. And we could sit in here all day and decide whether or not one ranking agency is better than another. At the end of the day, it's about quality and making sure that, you know, our students are provided with a quality education. I guess what I'm saying is, as you know, the work gets done in a committee. I would suggest, is there a committee that could at least address this? Dr. Glover?
I would ask that you allow the university to operate as a university and let the academic affairs and the council, the office of the president, administrative council, presidents' cabinet, let us address this issue and get back to the board.
Could they bring that back through the academic affairs?
Yes, we'd get it back to the academic affairs committee. Yes. I did want to add to that. I did find, I had to find an article that was written about the ranking. I need my glasses for this one. It talked about the rankings, and the presidents discuss this a lot, the HBCU presidents. I just read a part of, Winston-Salem University Chancellor Edward Ralston drafted an unprecedented letter to his campus community this week, alerting that a populist of the nation's best colleges upon which the school and the place would not make the rankings this year. The reason, because US News and World report best colleges is inherently unfair to non-Ivy league, and particularly historical black institutions. We discuss this a lot, it's nothing new to us. And that's why I was stating to you that there are other ranking agencies that are much more, much more liberal to HBCUs than the US News and World reports. I don't go into the other aspects of what goes on in the president's meeting regarding the rankings, and we've never based our entire discussion of our quality on what some outside majority firm thought about Tennessee State University.
Dr. Sekman, would you accept an amendment to your motion whereby, in understanding portions of what you're asking, whereby we ask that this particular subject be referred? I mean, be gone, ask the management to bring to us the information back to the board that we are requesting, rather than it becoming a board issue that would be resolved here?
That will be fine.
Well, we're going to have to amend that. Why don't, if you withdraw your motion, then you could just simply answer that.
So, you withdraw your motion, for an amendment motion?
Whichever way is the best way to go.
Withdraw your motion.
Yeah.
So, I will withdraw my motion.
Okay. And you could state that motion with the amendment?
Really?
What he said on the record and amended.
I would like to make a motion that we ask management to do the necessary research on the rankings of the university and to bring that information back to the board meeting. And if it's not complete by the next board meeting, then give us an update at that particular point in time.
I want to clarify, back to the board meeting or back to the academic affairs, student affairs committee?
Back to the academic student affairs committee. Ms. Martin's committee.
Very well. So, motion is on the floor, is that second?
Second.
All right. Let's take that to a vote, Ms. Pelton.
Trustee Cole?
Yes.
Trustee Corbill?
Yes.
Trustee Freeman?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Trustee Martin?
Yes.
Trustee McKenzie?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Sekman?
Aye.
Trustee Walker?
Yes. All right, motion is approved. Thank you so very, very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have one more faculty insight on the items related to academic affairs and student affairs committee.
Okay.
I'll be brief. This is related to our, again, enrollment, retention, and graduation issues. Based on the T-HAC, in fact, T-HAC reports that TSU's headcount and FT enrollments are the lowest of the LGIs, but more importantly, what is more important to the campus community is that our undergraduate enrollment has declined three consecutive years, and graduate enrollment has declined four, five consecutive years. Our freshman retention rates are alarming. TSU's 2017 freshman retention rate is 64.3 percent, and compared to the TTU, which is 85.5 percent. Our six-year graduation rate is 33 percent. TTU has 58.4. And Austin P., which is the next lowest of LGIs, has a graduation rate of 47.6 percent, which is 15 points better than TSU. Our four-year graduation rate is about 10 percent. TTU has four-year graduation rate, 23 percent. And so on. I'm not going to continue with the numbers. And as I expressed, our headcount enrollment is down 8 percent. FT enrollment is down 8.7 percent this academic year. We cannot continue to tie our entire enrollment, retention, and graduation-related problems to students' lack of funding. Admission processing, financial aid, transfer/transfer processing, along with the other student services are slow and sometimes ineffective. Our community college initiative is not working well. Our recruitment, we have to come up with innovative recruitment plans. Therefore, I have a motion. I move that the board is provided with a comprehensive plan, again, not only goal and objectives, that describes in detail the following. One, the underlying real issues for the current enrollment problem. Second, the short term, medium term, and long term enrollment goals. I really like to see what numbers that we are envisioning for us for short term, short term being three to five years, medium term being five to seven years, and long term being seven to 10 years. And also, number three, how to address the identified issues to reach the identified short term, medium term, and long term goals. This is coming from the campus community. We really like to see a vision and a plan, different than strategic plan, focusing on the enrollment, retention, and graduation particularly.
Well, thank you, Mr. Sekman, for your motion, and allow me to share some commentary to you regarding that. And of course, I will acknowledge your motion. I'm sure others will have some discussion around this as well. I am sitting in this seat very familiar with the strategic direction that the president has shared with us in terms of the sharp, I guess, we call it sharp right turn the university has chosen to take in terms of its standards, and that, and she will speak to that in her report. And I certainly would hope that those who are here will pay particular attention to that issue around headcount, around retention, et cetera, because the end game, as I understand it, is that the strategic direction we're going is to enhance graduation rates, which have a lot to do with students and their performance, and how you admit students, and those things. And so, I'm sure she will speak to that, and we've had some discussion around that in committee. And so, I am, I just want to go on record to suggest that I was very clear about that, but I do want to acknowledge your motion, and there's any discussion on the floor around that. But I'm looking forward to hearing from the president's report, because I think much of what you shared, beyond just general issues, I think she has a strategic plan around that. And obviously, if you're not satisfied with that, I'm curious to know other board members and what we think about that. Yes.
Yeah, I'd be remiss if I didn't say, because for those that were not, were not at the finance and budget committee, and Dr. Sekman was, I recall a very robust conversation about enrollment, about it being a top priority for the university, about how a plan is needing to be taken place, very targeted. We talked about marketing. We talked about students. We talked about how do we get, you know, engage people. We talked about engaging alumni. So, we have the, I think we had a very long and robust conversation on a variety of tactics to be able to improve our enrollment. I would also say, although you said we didn't, there was a very detailed report given on the whys, specifically, the effect of the nursing program, the effect of, you know, students that did not return. So, again, for those in the campus community that are here today and that are watching, this was a very top priority that was brought up at the committee. It was discussed very thoroughly. It was analyzed incredibly well, and I think that we all came out of that, in my opinion, with that, yes, there is going to be a specific comprehensive plan, that again, Dr. Glover will be sharing with you a little bit of the preview of that. So, I'm a little bit at a loss on why, you know, again, a motion is coming up for something that we've discussed at length today.
And there would be a preview that she would be giving, because in the committee meeting, the decision was for management to come back with a very detailed plan that we had asked for. And those items that you did, I agree with Trustee Corbill, the items that you mentioned, we discussed in detail in the committee meeting, and the applicable assignments were made to the individuals and to the deans that were present. So, I would think we would wait till we get that information back into the committee that it needed to go to.
Any discussion? Okay, there is a motion on the floor. I will acknowledge that motion. Is there a second? Okay. All right, that motion dies without a second. Thank you so much, Dr. Sekman, and of course, Trustee Martin. Hand your hand.
Okay, thank you, Chairman Walker. The Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee also considered and voted to recommend to the full board the approval of TSU's policy on SACS substantive change. The policy is in the September 20th, 2018 board meeting materials. Pursuant to the Board Policy 003, delegation of authority to the president, the board delegated authority to the president to establish and approve policies governing the institution, except for policies reserved for the board's approval. The board reserved for its approval policies related to academic programs, among others. The Division of Academic Affairs has also developed a policy governing the conditions and process by which TSU shall notify or obtain from TSU's accrediting body, the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools Commissions on Colleges, better known as SACS, before the institution implements any substantive change in its academic programs. The notification to SACS would occur after the necessary approvals at the institution and board levels. Based on the committee's review of the policy and discussion of the policy with the university personnel, the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee voted to recommend to the full board of TSU policy on SACS substantive change as contained in the board's September 20th, 2018 meeting materials. On behalf of the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee, I move to approve TSU's policy on SACS substantive change as contained in the board's September 20th, 2018 meeting materials.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion this time? Let's take a vote, please.
Trustee Cole?
Yes.
Trustee Corbill?
Yes.
Trustee Freeman?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Martin?
Yes.
Trustee McKenzie?
Yes.
Trustee Sekman?
Aye.
Trustee Walker?
Yes. And the motion carries. Thank you, Trustee Martin.
The Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee also discussed and considered for recommendation to approve the institution's proposed new certificate program in public health and local government. The board's September 20th, 2018 meeting materials contained information on the proposed revised academic programs. The institution is proposing the creation of the certificate in public health management to train a team of highly trained public health managers and physicians in partner countries to work with scientists, advance public health agendas, and improve health outcomes by using the newest tools in public health. The local government program is short-term program to train current and future local government employees in Tennessee on how to effectively and efficiently manage public sector organizations at the local government level. Pursuant of the Focus Act, the board's bylaws, and the board's delegation of authority to the president policy, the board must approve new academic programs. Upon approval of the board, T-HAC must approve for, must provide for final improvement. Based on the committee's review of the policy and discussion of the policy with the university personnel, the committee voted to recommend for approval by the full board the institution's proposed new certificate program in public health and local government as contained in the board's September 20th, 2018 meeting material. On behalf of the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee, I move to approve the institution's new certificate programs in public health and local government as contained in the board's September 20th, 2018 meeting materials.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. To vote, thank you.
Trustee Cole?
Yes.
Trustee Corbill?
Yes.
Trustee Freeman?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Martin?
Yes.
Trustee McKenzie?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Sekman?
Aye.
Trustee Walker?
Yes. Trustee Martin? Motion is approved.
The last action item by the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee involved the institution's proposed inactivation of the School of Psychology concentration in the MS program in psychology. Based on the committee's review and discussion of this agenda item, the committee voted to recommend to the full board the referral of the agenda item involving the inactivation of the School of Psychology concentration in the MS program in psychology back to the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee for further study and consideration. On behalf of the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee, I move for the board to refer to the agenda item involving the inactivation of the School of Psychology concentration MS program in psychology back to the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee for further study and consideration.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion, take it to a vote.
Trustee Cole?
Yes.
Trustee Corbill?
Yes.
Trustee Freeman?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Martin?
Yes.
Trustee McKenzie?
Yes.
Trustee Sekman?
Abstain.
Trustee Walker?
Yes. Motion is approved.
Chair Walker, that concludes the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee report.
Thank you so much, Trustee Martin, and of course, all the other committees of the academic, members of the academic affairs.
Excuse me, did you get my vote? I just wanted to make sure that my vote was counted.
We didn't hear you, but I take it you voting aye in the last agenda item?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. Thank you so much, again, for all the work that you do. All right, this time, the next item on the agenda is the executive committee report. And as of, as the chair, the board, and the executive committee, I will report out the actions and information items of today's executive committee meeting. The executive committee meeting met today to discuss and vote on specific committee agenda items. The committee voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the June 21st, 2018 executive committee meeting minutes, the approval of the August 15th, 2018 executive committee minute, meeting minutes, the approval of an amendment to board policy 002, committees of the board policy, and approval of board policy 005, board self-assessment and trustee orientation. The executive committee also heard a report from Vice Chair Cole on an update on the president's annual performance review process. As I stated, the executive committee voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the minutes of the June 21st, 2018 executive committee meeting. It's contained in the board materials of September 20th, 2018 board meeting. On behalf of the executive committee, I move to approve the minutes of the June 21st, 2018 executive committee meeting. It's contained in the board materials for September 20th, 2018 board meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we'll have a vote, please.
Trustee Cole?
Yes.
Trustee Corbill?
Yes.
Trustee Freeman?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Martin?
Yes.
Trustee McKenzie?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Sekman?
Aye.
Trustee Walker?
Yes. Motion is approved, thank you. The executive committee also voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the minutes of August 15th, 2018 executive committee meeting as contained in board materials for 20, the 20th of September, 2018 board meeting. On behalf of the executive committee, I move to approve the minutes of the August 15th, 2018 executive committee meeting as contained in the board materials for September 20th, 2018 board meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we'll have a vote, please.
Trustee Cole?
Yes.
Trustee Corbill?
Yes.
Trustee Freeman?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee McKenzie?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Sekman?
Aye.
Trustee Walker?
Yes. Motion is approved, thank you. After reviewing the proposed amendment of board policy 002, committees of the board, the executive committee voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the amendment. Information pertaining to this policy amendment is contained in your September 20th, 2018 board meeting materials. It's noted in the materials, the policy amendment provides clarity on the application of the TBR appeals policy, TBR policy 1021100, to the TSU board trustees structured by specifying that the executive committee shall be deemed to appropriate standing committees to review a petition to appeal the president's grievance decision to the board. The amendment also authorizes the board chair and as chair of the decision, as chair of the executive committee to assign the petition to a member of the executive committee for review and a final determination as to whether to grant the petition, taking into consideration the fact that's reflected in the TBR appeals policy. On behalf of the executive committee, I move to approve the amendment, board policy 002, committees of the board policy as contained in your September 20th, 2018 board meeting materials. Is there a second?
Second.
Vote, please.
Trustee Cole?
Yes.
Trustee Corbill?
Yes.
Trustee Freeman?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Yes.
Trustee McKenzie?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell.
Yes.
Trustee Sekman.
Yes.
Trustee Walker.
Yes. Motion is approved. Thank you. After reviewing the proposed po- board policy zero zero five, board self-assessment, trustee orientation policy, the executive committee voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the policy. Information pertaining to this policy is contained in your September 20th, 2018 board meeting materials. It's noted in the materials, Tennessee State University's accrediting body, the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools Commission on Colleges, requires that TSU's governing board conduct regular self-assessments to evaluate board effectiveness. This policy, in part, establishes the mechanism by which the board shall conduct a self-assessment of its performance as a governing body. With the potential appointment of some new trustees next year, this policy also establishes the trustee orientation policy and program for ensuring that new trustees are appropriately oriented to the institution's mission and operations and the board policies and applicable laws governing their role as trustees. Policy also authorizes the board chair to schedule an orientation or educational session for the trustees to attend. On behalf of the executive committee, I move to approve board policies zero zero five, board self-assessment and trustee orientation as contained in your September 20th, 2018 board, uh, meeting materials. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, shall we have a votes?
Trustee Cole.
Yes.
Trustee Corbille.
Yes.
Trustee Freeman.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Uh, specifically, client relations.
Trustee Martin.
Yes.
Trustee McKenzie.
As we're talking to managers.
Yes.
Yeah, you may want to moot that, Trustee McKenzie, I think there's some background.
Available to all CIO clients.
Trustee Mitchell.
Yes.
Trustee Sekman.
Yes.
Trustee Walker.
Yes. Thank you, the motion is approved. The next item on the agenda is the president's report on enrollment, and the materials for your report, of this report item are included in your board materials for today's board meeting. The chair recognizes President Glover, who will provide a report on this agenda item. President Glover.
Thank you, uh, Doc, Mrs., Dr. Chairman. Good afternoon to each of you. Uh, today, this is the president's report. We're going to start with the new freshman class enrollment. Uh, if you look at the GPAs of the new freshman class, this time, it's, it's, it's slowly getting to where we wanted to be in the low threes or high threes, within the three-point re- uh, rim. So we got, it went from 2016, two point eight, fall 2017, three oh seven. That's the first year we started with the new standards. Followed, this year's the three point one. ACT was eighteen point zero in 2016, 2017, eighteen point seven, and this year's eighteen point nine, that GPA's like incoming freshmen. The enrollment trends, as you can see, enrollment has dropped, uh, it increased, uh, the first three years, uh, 2014, 15, 16. Uh, it dropped in 16 and 17, sorry, it dropped in 16 and 17, and then 18. We had enrollment decline. So let's go to the factors contributing to the declines. First, we know that there was a community college of free tuition for Tennessee Promise. That was one of the reasons for the decline. The, the second one, it's one that we as a body adopted, the leadership of Tennessee State University, led by the, the cabinet and the administrative council, which many people sit in this room, uh, make up the administrative council. We decided that our admission standards were not competitive with other universities, our peer schools. Our standards allow for a student with a two-two-five or a nineteen on ACT to be admitted to Tennessee State. Well, that means a student could have a one point eight GPA and make nineteen on ACT, they could get admitted. Well, if you look at the quality that we're seeking, students want to work, want to learn in a competitive environment because quality attracts quality. We made a, a decision, the faculty brought it to me, uh, and we, 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 we worked through it and said, we had several scenarios, but the last one was the two-five GPA and a nineteen, not the or, with two-five and nineteen. Because of these new standards, unfortunately, there were about nine hundred students who were denied admission to TSU because they didn't meet the new standards. We realized that making this decision would mean that there were students who would have to go to ju- to community colleges, and there were those that we would not be able to admit to TSU. It's not something we enjoy doing, but we want to look at the, in the long run, how we can improve the quality of TSU students and allow the students the opportunity and the support they will need to graduate from TSU. As you know, the model has changed. It's not the number of students we have, but it is the number of students who can move through the system and graduate. We even had, uh, some robust discussions about whether, where we saw the enrollment's going to be, uh, in the mid-seven to seventy-eight hundred, so we saw that, we even considered, okay, students who parents were still calling, asking they be admitted. If we thought the faculty wanted sheer numbers, we could have the numbers, we could be at close to nine thousand students, if we thought that's what the faculty wanted. But based on discussions with the faculty, and I am in touch with the faculty community, that's not what the faculty wanted. I was clear on that. That was a mandate from the faculty. We want to have students who have some possibility of graduating. And, and this is what we came to do as a group, and this is where we are now. We did not admit the students who we didn't think had the chance of graduating. So that's why we, we do it on the front end, as, as the faculty have said, we do it on the front end, so that on the back end, they won't be stuck in the system and not graduate. The third reason was students not being able to return due to financial reasons, and the next line is, cause of that. There were, there were students who, if you look at, uh, the, from the prior semester, there were a lot of balances. We had over two thousand students that had balances and just could not register. We held fast to that this, this semester and said that no student with a prior balance, um, we think we had over two hundred dollars could come back to TSU. Um, we had lots of calls from parents, lots of calls from students, but we stuck to that. Um, the whole two thousand were not turned away. We saw that there were some students in this population that actually had, um, promise, they had three point Os and above, so we just started, they'd wa- going to various funding sources. The Thurgood Marshall College Fund, with which I am associated, we made calls later night with them and said, I need to meet with you, we need funding for our students. We met with Thurgood Marshall, um, and they managed, they told us with three point O above, we could help you. We, we got them to drop it down to two point eight. They ended up giving forty-six students scholarships to come back to school. And then Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, for which I served as international president, I was able to get funding from Alpha Kappa Alpha to assist students in staying in school. Signa Corporation, uh, trustee Pamela Martin was able to go to Signa Corporation and get funding. Um, the Department of Agriculture, agriculture for the students in semester, this fall semester and those with balances. I flew to DC and met with, uh, one of the, the funding sources at USDA to see if we could get funding for students to stay in school. Then went back to Alpha Kappa Alpha, uh, to see if we could get additional funding. So those who, go back, so those who had prior balances, we were able to, to meet with them, to keep them in school. Uh, we talked to, we were calling around almost every day, well, more than every day, more than once during the day. And on one conversation, uh, Dr. Mr. Chase and I, the vice president of finance, and Dr. Cole, had a conversation with Agriculture Department, to US Department of Agriculture, just to, to get some clarity on funding, to see if they could, if we could get funding from them. I got her on the phone so that, since she was chair of audit, this is, and this is our, uh, financial VP. And we talked through the scenarios on which we could get additional funding, so we wouldn't, we wouldn't have to purge so many students. The way we worked it out, we were able to save students. Now, there are those who come to me, and included Dr. Sekman, who said to me about purging students. I'm not of the attitude that we should just purge the students because they have a balance. Uh, my, my objective is to find funding to assist students to stay in school. These are African-American students who are trying to go to college. I'm not trying to put them out of school. I'm trying to assist them to get an education. Without an education, there's nothing they can do in America these days. So I work as hard as I possibly can, so does the leadership of TSU, to make sure students stay in school. If I'm criticized for that, I'll accept that. But we ran around the country trying to find funds to help students to stay in school. So we went to Thurgood Marshall, we went to AKA, we went to Signa, and we appreciate what Signa did, went to others too that gave money. Um, people knew we were after, and, and I was criticized by, at least one board member, by saying, you're doing the students a disservice by not purging them, their balances are high, they're borrowing money. Yes, students borrow money. I'm not, I'm not of the opinion that you shouldn't borrow money to go to school. If you weren't born rich, you're going to have to borrow money to go to school, because college is not free unless you've got scholarships to cover everything. So we asked the students, uh, is our role to say, don't borrow any more than you need? We have to manage their borrowing, manage their debt, but if, we do a student a disservice by saying, don't borrow money, and we do them disservice by saying, just purge them because they have a balance. Now, if we can't find funding for them, yes, purge them from their classes, because they can't go to school for free, and we can't let the balance continue to, to grow. But if we can help them find funding, that's part of our jobs. We recognize, we're here because somebody paid the way for us. So we can't get to the point where we say, you can't go to school because you don't have money. Well, you don't go to school because if we can't help you find funding, that's the last resort for you to go home. We do everything in our power to keep you in school. And so, we don't want you to just drop out for the sake of dropping out. Let's go to the next one. I'm very passionate about that. When someone tells me that we should purge students because they have a balance, I say, yes, you should, because that's the last resort, but you do all you can to keep from purging students. And that's the position we've taken, and we'll continue to take that position. Continuing to address the, the declines, we have begun to process a development, this enrollment and recruitment strategic plan. We've met more than once, um, a three-year plan and a five-year plan, and we're putting together, and the board meeting, the committee meeting this morning, we did decide, we did, uh, have a directive to bring that back to, to the committee, and that's what we were going to do, we're going to cost it out and bring it back to the committee. And we're focusing on recruitment as well as retention, because we've done some things already that will be a part of it. We have improved the practices in, in our graduate school to improve the IT, um, the IT that we have, I made some notes, is, is mainly around how could we improve the application processes? We brought on, uh, Dr. Robin Mel- Melton, who's done a phenomenal job in getting the IT structure together at the graduate level, so that we could improve that process and, and improve the application process of getting students back into graduate school. We've implemented some other marketing strategies for today's sort of social media, the content market, the search engine optimization. So we're honored to, to address the problem with enrollment declines. So we're doing, we, that's going to be part of our strategic plan, the marketing and recruitment. Marketing is a huge part of our addressing this enrollment problem, and we're starting now. We're meeting with the council, we're meeting with the superintendents in both, uh, the West Tennessee area and the Middle Tennessee area, the school superintendents to assist us and, and point us to the right students. We're meeting with counselors, we're going to various college, various high schools, we're going to community colleges. Uh, Dr. Mitchell and I, Dr. Jackie Mitchell and I, going to meet with Nashville State Community College President, who came from TSU. We're going to meet with her, we're signing IOU with the, MOU with them. So with that, to just, to beef up our enrollment, we're going, we're, this is a ground game, we realize it, so. And then some other things we're doing. We have an extensive campaign to contacting students with a three point zero or higher to encourage them to attend TSU. We, to market TSU and encourage students to attend TSU. We have an extensive campaign for TSU graduating seniors, asking them to attend graduate school. Now, the day is over when we tell students, you should go and get your graduate degree from somewhere else. In fact, the old thinking was, you need one degree from, if you go to HBCU, then you need to go to a majority institution for your, for your master's degree. That thinking is antiquated. If you have a quality program, you stay and get your master's degree. So we start with the students we already have, who are graduating seniors, and talk to them about staying at TSU. And then we have the community college outreach. It is nowhere near where it should be. And in fact, we are, we are putting a lot of discussion, and that's going to be a huge part of our enrollment process, is to make sure we reach out to the community colleges. As we just stated, we, we're starting with Nashville State Community College. We've already, um, we've talked to Southwest, we're going to talk to them some more in much more detail. We have MOU with them, we're going to extend that. Then we're focusing on various populations, again, the community college and non-traditional students, adult learners, the students who have not returned, veterans. We're improving our online enrollment, so that we're costing out these various populations, what it would take to get these populations to come to TSU. We're going to have an aggressive, robust plan for addressing our, the recruitment strategies, and there are many more than, than those, but it will all be a part of the recruitment plan that we discussed in detail in our, in the committee meeting this morning. So our plan is to, to cost this out, to put it on paper, present it back to the committee, the various avenues of how we're going to sell our new admission standards, how we're going to sell the quality, the new TSU is about, is academic, the new, the renaissance, the TSU renaissance, uh, the, the new academic programs and the standards that we're selling to our students. So we also did enrollment by college, so we can see the various colleges, that how the enrollment, what it did over the last five years. We don't have eighteen yet, because we didn't, haven't got all those numbers together yet. But the colleges that had increases, agriculture for last year, you know, because last year was, was our first big drop, uh, then the first big drop. Then business increased, education increased, and public service, those are the ones that had increases, uh, for the last five years. If you look at the, now then, we, we took a, took a deeper dive. Additionally, about college, we looked at every major to see how each major did as far as recruiting students for your particular area. If you look at the ones that had increases, you can see the ones in yellow. Can't see it. Administra- go back, administrative supervision, um, you can see art, business, go to the next one. There were those who, who we're looking at, we're letting people know that everybody has a responsibility to recruit and to retain students. We talked to students, asked them to, so what are, what are the issues you're having? They were, were focused on, you're not coming back to TSU. We're focused on recruitment and retention. The ones that, you can see the ones that did not have an increase in students, and the ones in yellow were the ones that had an increase. So we, we, we praised and applauded the ones who really worked hard to keep students at TSU. And there were those who, who are still trying to keep students here and to recruit. So we applaud the, the faculty members who are recruiting. Go to the next one. So you can see the ones in yellow again are the ones that had increases. So I thought it was, it was important, the next one, thought it was important to do it by major, so that the board could see, showed to the faculty, the faculty staff institute, the various departments that had increases in their enrollment. Okay, so, and then the retention. We always say, the second R is retention, and these are the retention and completion initiatives that we've discussed before, so I won't go through those again. Um, but there's a, the mini semesters are working, the extreme spring break, the May semester, the summer school, uh, those are ones where the students can go and get extra courses to, to stay on track, on target to graduate. You look at the initiatives under review, we're looking at the Winter Express, where we can take courses over the Christmas holiday. Uh, Dr. Moses had that up, so we can see the faculty members who will be interested in the students, the Winter Express, and this is going to be the first time we're going to launch that. And then online university, and we're still working through that one. Then the, for students with balances, we're working with certain companies to have students work and the funding, instead of getting a, getting a paycheck in their hands, it would go directly to the university to pay down their balances. So that's to help students with their balances, so they can return to school in the fall. Then we have some off-campus and online programs. You can see the off-campus program at NES, that's Engineering Degree, the online delivered Masters in Public Health, then approved two plus two programs. Next. Mott Low, State Community College, that's the BS in Industrial Technology, we're looking at that fall of next year, the BS in Agricultural Sciences at McMenville, fall of next year, then Nashville State Community College, uh, Agriculture, I mean, Articulation Agreement for Secondary Education, the Biology and the Chemistry, the Mathematical Sciences, then the BBA in Business Administration for, uh, 2019, and Hospitality Tourism Management. We know this is a, this is a very hot area, uh, especially with the Nashville growth. And then degree production, if you look at the second bullet, the, the number of degrees has increased. The fourteen, fifteen was nine eighty-eight, uh, twenty fif- twenty-five, two thousand fifteen to sixteen, a thousand twenty-five, sixteen, seventeen, eleven, seventy-three. And then, if you look at, um, the iPads, which is now the, the new way of looking at the graduation rates, our graduation rate will be considerably higher, because right because right now, it's the old method of using only full-time students. But that's no longer the model anywhere in the country. The day is over when the parent drives you to school, drives you off of your dormitory, your residence hall, and they drive back. Our students now are single parents, adult learners, they're military. They're not the traditional student who comes to school and goes here all day for their Monday through Friday, and then go home and graduate in four years. That's not who we are anymore. That's not the population of college anymore. So iPads is looking at the new method of how we now determine the retention rates and graduation rates. And that's what we're still studying. Because if we were to look at that, our graduation rate would be considerably higher in the 40s. We looked at, I think Dr. Moses gave me a number, 47.8%, 47.5% what the new rate would be if we, under the iPad model, when you look at part-time students. Because right now, we exclude part-time students. But we're looking at all of those for, at that model. And so, the next area I want to go to is the salary adjustment. We're working hard to ensure that the faculty are paid properly. We did an across-the-board increase. That was effective July 1 for everybody. Effective, well, who's on the payroll as of July, as of June 30. And we gave all the faculty a 2% increase and the staff a 100 and a half. But we look specifically at the PhD faculty to bring them up to a minimum salary at the assistant professor level of $55,000. We want any PhD faculty to be brought up, we brought them up to $55,000. Department chairs, we said that we looked at, their salary level was too low. We brought all the department chairs up to $90,000. That's including, of course, the premium for being a chair. And we made sure the cabinet members did not receive salary adjustments. I'm smiling because I'm looking off from the cabinet right now. And so, in this new budget model that we have, we're making sure, even though the salary, even though the numbers are down as far as enrollment is concerned, I wanted, I go through pains to assure the faculty that we are not making faculty cuts because of that. We are cut, we are cutting other things. We've cut out the budget. So I know that there's been some talk that's been said that we're about to have a wholesale faculty cut. That's just simply not true. It started by people who are not, who don't talk in the best interest of TSU. That is not what we do. We've never ever said that, nor has it been even an item of discussion, dismissing faculty. That's not what we're about to do at all. Now, you have to do your job, really. But I'm saying the massive numbers of getting rid of faculty because enrollment is low, that's the sacred cow on the table. We can't, we're not going to cut faculty. That's not, that's nowhere, it's never even been discussed that we're going to start. We've started with everything else. We cut out the cell phones, we cut out the cars, we cut everything else before we tell faculty, "You have to go home." So I want to make sure that when the rumors are being spread, that's just simply not true. Let's move now to accreditation. The transca-, now, reporters due September of next year. In fact, just under the year from today. And then our visit will be the following March of 2020, and under the revised standards. And there's some new emphasis now placed on the student placement. That's why we spent a lot of time in the meeting this morning, talking about the student placement, or at least it's part of the, we spend it in our meetings on Tuesday mornings. And then today, we had information on student placement, student internships too. So we're scheduling meetings right now, going over the Saks report. We've already begun to meet with that to make sure that we are on target with the reinformation process. And then we have some, you can go to the next one. Go to the next one. Some program accreditations that's coming up this year. So you can see there are six that are coming up this year. A couple this fall and the rest of next semester. And let's move to grants and research. As you can see, we're in the $50 million bracket when it comes to grants and research. $51 million the first year, 1415, $54 million is 1516. Then it dropped down to $43 million. We had, well, that was the year that we changed. Administration changed, and some things took place that year. We brought it back up from 1718 to 52.8 million. And then the goal this year was $50 million, and we'll probably exceed that. And so, and TSU's in the top five. HBCUs are receiving research funding, not just in the nation, I mean, in the entire nation, not just in the state of Tennessee. And I wanted to say a word about our endowment. The endowment now stands at about $56 million. Give or take how the market swings, but $56 million on endowment has consistently grown, has increased over the last five years, $13.8 million. I thought it'd be interesting to show the HBCU endowments. You can see Howard has the largest endowment. Spelman has a second, and Hampton and Xavier. If you go down, Tennessee State is number 10 with $56.7. We rank number two among the public schools. FAMU has higher, 113, and then Tennessee State, and then some of the others behind that. I might add that in my role as International President of Alpha Kappa Alpha, we've undertaken a project to raise funding for HBCUs, $10 million to be exact. We want to focus on the schools that have lower than $50 million in endowment. There were only 15 schools that had, as you can see, less than 15 schools have $50 million or more in endowment. And so, that's, that's really insufficient to run universities. So we're asking the panel and the council to join in with us in raising money for historical by college universities. And so, we have led the way. And the first of this was on last Monday, when we kicked off HBCU Week. Alpha Kappa Alpha raised $1.1 million as support of HBCUs. And of that money, approximately $100,000 is going to come to Tennessee State. And I thought there'd be some hand claps, or something on that. And that, and the goal is to make sure that schools are endowed because to give a check is great, and we all need it. But we live off endowments, give scholarships, continuing scholarships off endowments. And so, and that's where we are. We're 56, we're number 10 when it comes to endowments, but it's still extremely low. So we've talked about how we're going to beef up our fundraising efforts. We have these conversations regularly. We're nowhere near where we need to be. We have to focus more on what we do, on the corporations, on that corporate given. So we're beefing up that, we've spoken about that. So that's our next move, to make sure we have more corporate support and that goes directly to our endowment. So campus safety is next. What is on the saying is that we are, we have reduced, we're continuing to increase the police visibility, and we're continuing to control access to the campus. We reduce the crime on campus despite the fact that crime in the city has increased. We still have reduced our crime on campus. We receive funding for our safety initiatives that we're still using. We've established a safety patrol for students. We just participated in quite a few things to make sure that the campus is safe. And a good, a good point is the last bullet. Dean Stevenson, I was there for a moment, met with the freshman students last year, and the feedback was that they indicated 93% of the freshmen feel safe on campus. So we, that's largely to the police department, Dr. Ford, and their area in Student Affairs. They made sure that the students feel safe on campus. 93% feel safe on campus. And then let's move to new construction. We have two new residence halls that we're, that's coming on. We have the Health Science Building, Food Science Building, and we're to get approval for that. But we're ready for that to go to the building commission. The Alumni House and Welcome Center, where one of our own alums, well, our own alum, Mr. Amos Otis. Not only did he pledge $1 million, he had him a check for half a million dollars last month. And then the Gateway Arts Interests, we want to redesign that. So I have a schedule now of the construction schedule. The two residence halls, we want to break ground on that next month. The Health Science Building, want to break ground on that one next month. The Food Science Building, we're not sure. We say in November, if we can get that approved, we're ready to break ground on that. But we can't do it until we get the approval for that. And the Gateway Interests and Alumni House and Welcome Center, we think they'll be following the first of the year. But we're extremely excited about what's going on in the new construction for these four properties. Of course, the residence halls, we want to have such that it would be one common lobby and two residence halls. And then for Phase Two, we're seeking a new engineering building, the football stadium. And then we have the Cumberland Project, we went over this morning, the board meeting, I mean, in the committee meeting, the Cumberland Project, working through that for a little bit more detail. We're going to make a presentation of that at the next board meeting. So I thought it'd be interesting for you to know, the last time we've had some state-funded buildings. The Performing Arts Building in 2003 was the last one we had. As you can see, the Student Campus Center was in 1993. Rudolph Residence Hall, '95. The Administration Building was 1996, and then the Performing Arts Center in 2003. But there have been other buildings there that are state-funded. The next, we showed other campus buildings, university-funded buildings, with an NRC apartment in 2002. A Research and Sponsor Program Building, 2006. And then the practice facility was 2011. The USDA has funded the Ag Greenhouses, 2012. The Ag Biotech in 2013. Ag Education, 2014. Ag Pavilion, 2016. So these are the other campus buildings. But I did show you the state-funded buildings. You can see we're, that's why we're so pleased and happy to get the Health Science Building. This is the first time we've had a state-funded building in a number of years. And I, then I'll just end with some positive news. You can see that we had a new plan discovered by TSU Astronomers. We thought that was, that made the headlines around the world. The Wisconsin Crater Band, this went viral. When, now, band performers, I can't even read it. I can't even see it from here. I can't see it. I just know it was Keith Urban, I can't see the writing on it. And everybody around the world's been calling me about that and wanting to copy that picture, and how did he do that? And so, it's just, this is some of the positive things that James Shaw Jr. kicked off his foundation here on campus. It's just, it's just a wonderful, some good news that we had to share as we close out this report. And, Mr. Chairman, this is the President's report. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Madam President, for your very comprehensive report. And of course, we're very grateful and thankful for the work that you are doing. This time, we want to move now, and we received that report. Thank you so much. And I think we should give our President a hand for the direction.
I want to make an announcement of Dr. Mitchell. Dr. Mitchell, I want to announce that the Jefferson, she's receiving a Jefferson Clinical Award on October 30, 2018. And it's really for faculty, it represents faculty honors. And she is the first African-American, well, first female, first African-American and first female to ever receive this award. So I wanted to, we should give her a round of applause for that. Thank you.
Also, in the same vein of that, the actual day before that award, our President will be receiving the Thurgood Marshall President, HBCU President of the Year in Washington DC. She's giving our Chair a reason to go to DC. Thank you. Thank you so very, very much. Yeah, and to Philadelphia. Catch the train right over, yes. Thank you all so much. I want to take a moment, certainly in the Board Chair's report, literally to thank, first of all, the Cabinet. I think we should give them a hand as well, the Cabinet, Administration, Faculty Staff, all those who have taken part. Also, the incredible work that we do. Again, I want to reiterate the critical work that happens in our committees. This is, this is, this is not light work, this is heavy lifting. And when we come to this place, it's important to understand that this, these trustees are doing a lot of heavy lifting and certainly invested into the vision of this university. And many of the issues that have been raised today, we take very, very seriously and hope to move the needle forward in progress in making certain that Tennessee State continues to remain vibrant. I think the future is bright. And of course, I want to, just as Chairman, it is an honor to serve alongside each one of you. The expertise that you share, the questions you raise, the work you do, it is invaluable. So I appreciate all of you, and thank you so very, very much. My report is just that simple. It is a word to say that I truly appreciate all of you and certainly appreciate our student trustee, who is incredibly resourceful. Thank you so much. And of course, we just appreciate all of you. There is no other business before us.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I have one last faculty inside, and it's not going to take too much time. Based upon almost 20 years of service to TSU as a professor, a department chair, and past Chair of the Council of Chairs, and now a trustee of the TSU Board of Trustees, I'm in a position to garner significant input from the campus community and to report the realistic and true view of the stakeholders' perceptions about the, of the state of the university. I must express that the campus community has expressed their deep concerns about our university's direction. Our faculty's common perception is that TSU's Board of Trustees is ineffective for changing this direction so far. Based on my interaction with the Board of Trustees at our quarterly meetings, it is not apparent that my faculty trustee feedback concerning our issues is being received in the insider view that my role brings to the Board. However, in my fiduciary responsibility to TSU, I will continue to bring forward views and opinions expressed to me by faculty. I strongly recommend that the Board seek faculty input via campus-wide survey to understand the campus climate. Therefore, I have a motion. I move that the Board conducts a third-party, independent, comprehensive campus climate survey of faculty prior to November 2018 Board Meeting, and the results are shared with the Board at the November 2018 meeting.
Okay, thank you so much for that, that motion. And allow me, before I take that motion again, I'd like to share commentary because I certainly believe that each one of the trustees who serve alongside me as colleagues can speak for themselves. But as Chairman, I feel the responsibility to gatekeep the integrity of this process and to say to all of those who may have some concerns about the ineffectiveness of this particular Board. Let's be very clear. Folks at this Board have a whole lot of things to do in real life. And they give their time and energy and great attention to matters of this university and speak very critically to a variety of issues and have challenged many of the, much of the data that's been brought to us. And my responsibility as Chair is to make certain that when there are specific issues that are called into question, perhaps to set special committees, as we've talked about here recently, to address and mitigate many of those issues. And so, I do want to bring a sense of calm and clarity to those who have some concern about the effectiveness of this Board. I've served on many Boards and still serve on many Boards. And this is one of the most effective and responsible Boards I've ever sat on. And it's my pleasure to serve as Chair. I would not, I would not sit on anything as a figurehead or bobblehead. It's not who I am nor anybody on this Board. And I'm not, I'm certain that's not what's being implied. But I think it's important to understand that these folks on this Board, they, they, they give their life and their heart for the success of this university.
Just clarification, I did not mean that the Board is ineffective. The people wants to see the impact on the direction of the university, the Board's impact on the direction of the university.
Very well. I just only responded to what I heard. I heard the Board was ineffective, so. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, very good. Okay, well, I'm a pretty good listener these days, so. But yes, so, if anyone else would like to speak to that before I acknowledge the motion that's on the floor. I, on that. Very well. All right, thank you. So there's a motion on the floor. Can you repeat that motion again?
I move that the Board of Trustees at TSU conducts a third-party, independent, comprehensive campus climate survey of faculty prior to November 2018 Board Meeting, and the results are shared with the Board at the November 2018 meeting. So I simply want the Board to understand the campus climate from the faculty perspective.
Okay. All right, there's a motion on the floor. Is that second? Very well. The motion then dies. Thank you so much for your time. Thank all of you for this incredible meeting. And of course, we look forward to our next meeting. I move that the meeting be adjourned.
Second.
Yes, sir.
Roll call.
Yes, I was about to say that. Trust, I was sorry. Let's have a roll call. Let's have a roll call.
Trustee Cole.
Yes.
Trustee Corvill.
Yes.
Trustee Freeman.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis. Trustee Martin.
Yes.
Trustee McKenzie. Trustee Mitchell.
Yes.
Trustee Segman.
Yes.
Trustee Walker.
Yes. Thank you. It's been approved. Thank you so much. We are adjourned. Thank you.